Bonk, bonk, bonk. Welcome to the regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. Today is September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We have a relatively light agenda as we're back to school and busy with lots of stuff going on, but our school committee plate's not too full tonight. We have visitors' recognition as always, approval of minutes, then a very exciting teaching and learning highlight where we're going to talk to a finalist for the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. We're going to ask the superintendent to provide a back-to-school update. We're then going to focus on our athletic facilities here at Foxborough High School and get an update on them. We have a DESC-coordinated program review timelines and process topic that we're going to cover. We need to do our school committee appointment for the delegate to the MASCE convention. We have some specific acceptance of donations and discussions we've been requested to add to our agenda, and then we'll take other matters. So, nice to see everybody. Welcome back. I was saying I haven't seen some of my colleagues in a little while, so I hope everyone had a good summer. And apologies to the public for starting a few minutes late. We just had to get some things together, which we think we have now together.
Yes.
We'll see.
Oh, why fun.
So, do we have any visitors that want to be recognized tonight before we start? Nothing, Jo? Nothing for us tonight? All right. Approval of minutes. August eighteenth, regular meeting. Mrs. Adair was absent, so she'll abstain, I believe. All right.
I didn't see anything, so I could motion to accept.
Or you can vote.
I can vote. It just means that, yeah, I can vote.
Did you see anything?
Nope. I think they're great.
I'll motion to accept as written unless anyone else has seen anything in their view. I didn't see anything, so.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Right to our exciting teaching and learning highlight.
Yes. Before we do that, just in the interest of time, should we introduce our new student representative?
I would think that would be appropriate.
I would be privileged to introduce Mikel Enricus, who's our new student representative. We do expect a second one at a future meeting, but welcome. So this is your photo walk for a minute. But it's always good to have new students join us. So, you're a junior, and I also heard today you're interested in theater and drama.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to comment on that, which we love. And so, the committee members will introduce themselves to you, and then we'll give you a little bit of, just a tiny bit of instruction about how the committee meetings work, and then maybe you and I can connect sometime at school, and we can go over a little more.
Well, I'm Debbie Laura, but you know me because I come to all your concerts.
I'm Mrs. Bellinger, and I have a son who's a freshman at the high school and also a seventh-grade son, and this is my third year on the committee, so welcome.
And we met earlier. I'm Mr. Gardner, and I have a freshman and an eighth grader.
And I'm Amy Burdows. I'm the Assistant Superintendent.
I'm Steve Uden, and I have a daughter here as a freshman and a daughter at the Ahern. And I'm really glad you chose to participate, and this is really important, so thank you.
I'm Katie Adair. Welcome. I have three students, three children that have been students, have gone through, might have known my son Nick Adair. He was just graduated last year, so welcome.
Bill, you're now the Business Manager for the Schools.
And I'm Jana Grazer, and I take the meeting minutes. Nice to have you.
Thank you.
And the Superintendent Secretary.
Yes, we met earlier. So, how this works, Mikel, is that you're welcome to comment on if they're having, if the committee's having a discussion and you would like to offer some thoughts on a student perspective, you're welcome to. They are the five voting members, so this is their committee meeting, and they vote. Dr. Burdows, Mr. Ugnin, and I don't vote. Students don't vote, but we do participate in the conversations. And so whatever you have to offer, you put your hand up, and the chair will recognize you, and we do like to hear from students, so don't hesitate, and then we'll follow up later. Okay?
So, Mikel, tell us just a little bit about yourself.
I'm a junior. I'm part of the Foxborough Music Program. I'm playing the orchestra. I'm also the president of the Drama Club, and I play volleyball, do track and field, and play softball.
Wow.
And, yeah, that's pretty much it. I participate in clubs like Community Warriors and stuff like that throughout the school year. And, yeah, I'm excited for the junior year.
Great.
And what interested you in joining us?
I'm on the Executive Board for Student Council, and Ms. Cardula approached the E-Board asking for volunteers to join the school committee, and I had a friend who participated in it last year, and she said she liked it, so I thought I'd give it a try.
Well, and as Mrs. Spinnelli said, we really value your input, so don't be shy. All right. Deal. Thank you, Debbie.
So, one of our own that we are very proud of, Ms. Kristen Durico, if you could come up to the guest, and actually Diana might want to come with her, Diana Myers-Packler.
She needs a spot.
Yes, so we'll put you in the spotlight first. So, quite an achievement, and certainly reflective on her reputation and performance here and how the students view her especially, never mind her colleagues, is that Kristen was one of the finalists for the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year this past spring, and we were so proud of her, and I personally think you should have been the Teacher of the Year. Might be a little bit biased, but we have in front of them the letter that Mrs. Myers-Packler wrote, but I also had read some other things that Mr. Murray wrote, and I know a little bit about, heard a lot about you. So, tell us a little bit about what you do and what that experience was like.
Well, what I do is, well, this is the start of my fifteenth year in Foxborough. I got hired right out of college, and I've always taught the world history. And then in two thousand and three, I built the AP US History Program, and I've been teaching that ever since. So, I've had a combination of the world and the American history, and mostly I've always taught in the basic subjects. As far as this process, the Teacher of the Year process, I was notified in January that I was nominated by Tom Murray. He actually nominated me for Mass Teacher of the Year and History Teacher of the Year as well. Over February vacation, I spent my week writing the application, and I was asked to write several essays about my perspectives, about my work, about my philosophy on teaching, my philosophy on communicating with parents and students.
My.
There was several. There was about seven components.
You were well-vetted.
Several components to that. And then in March, I found out that I was a semifinalist and was asked to continue on with the process. And from there, automatically, we were part of the, they honored eighteen teachers from Massachusetts in June, and I was one of the eighteen that was able to go to the State House and have that ceremony in honor of those that were selected as part of the Teacher of the Year program.
And some of the other eighteen were for other things, like Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, the Milken Family Foundation National Educated Award. So, in terms of the Teacher of the Year, there were actually ten.
Correct.
Ten semifinalists, and then?
Finalists, and then the Teacher of the Year.
So, you were one of ten across the state?
Correct.
Just want to point that out.
That's outstanding.
Yes. So, yeah, I was humbled by the, I was ecstatic to get the honor, and I was certainly surprised and humbled by it. So, it was very, very exciting for me. Yeah.
None of us were surprised that you made the finalists. So, I thought that maybe Diana might want to come up and read some of the things that she had in her letter. I know Tom wrote a letter, I wrote a letter, so we, none of us were surprised at all. Diana had done a pretty thorough job outlining the things that you do, so we thought it'd be important that she could come and speak to your, on behalf of your modest self.
I was thrilled, excuse me, to be able to write on Kristen's behalf. We are so fortunate. We have just a wonderful, I really feel a wonderful teaching staff, a wonderful faculty as well as support staff. And Kristen is certainly a prime example of what we're doing in the classroom and what our teachers are really giving to our students and in turn to the community. So, just a couple of things about Kristen, and I'll just pull this from the letter, but one of the things that I'd said is that entering Mr. Rico's room was truly an experience. Her passion and her love of history is evident. Her lessons engage her students from the moment they enter the door until they depart at the end of the period. She works to make history come alive for the young men and women in her classroom. And if the class period is not enough, she has students who often come by during lunch and others stopping by after school. She is innovative in her approaches to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And then just a couple of other sentences that glean out. Kristen's love of history is contagious. She's been instrumental in modeling for students what it means to study history and what it means to be a good citizen. Perhaps most importantly, Ms. Durico helps to guide student passions. Kristen is a teacher to whom students gravitate toward for all the right reasons. I would be remiss not to mention, as part of her impact on the school community, of what Kristen does beyond just the classroom. She's an advisor to the class, well, she was an advisor to the class, is an advisor to the class twenty-fifteen that's graduating this year. She has presented workshops on professional development days, serves on various school and district committees, is an example of the History Social Studies Review Team, heads the New Teacher Mentoring Program, was a vital part of the NIAS process at Foxborough High School, and is a positive leader in the building. In giving all that she does to the school, she still manages to find time for her children and her family. I don't know where, but you do squeeze them in. In summary, Kristen Durico is passionate about her subject, has high expectations which her students always rise to meet and often exceed, believes in her students, is compassionate, cares, always looks for ways to improve herself professionally, is a role model for others, teaches with love, and is an educator. And, actually, Debbie, if you have the letter, because I think my voice is going here, there's a piece on the back page, which I think, in the second page, which is actually taken from one of the students, one of the many students at the NHS induction this past year who wrote about her. One of the things that the students do is that they honor a teacher or a person in their life. It doesn't need to be a teacher. And Kristen had several students who actually spoke about her, and so I did go forward, and I did ask if I could grab this quote, and so I did, so I don't know if you want to share that.
I'm so thrilled, rest me, because I was there, and I was really, of all the comments that were made, I was really touched by this, and it really does speak to who you are. So, thanks, thanks and no thanks. This is one of our high school students' statement at the National Honor Society induction about an individual they greatly admire who serves as a role model. To most who know her around school, she is just Mrs. Durico. To my friend Sam and now the rest of us in AP US History, she is simply KD, even though she does, even if she doesn't know that. I think we all know it now, actually. Mrs. Durico teaches various history classes at FHS, and to many of us in AP US History has not only been a teacher, but a mentor and friend for three years. She teaches her subject with flair and passion and creates an engaging and positive learning environment. But what I think is most special about Ms. Durico is that she teaches with love. So much love, in fact, that our AP US History class feels like a family. And whether you have a question on the Korean War or just want to talk about how you're feeling that day, her door is always open. So, thank you, KD. Thanks for the compassion you emulate every single day, because there is nothing better than knowing that you have a teacher who truly loves and cares about you.
Oh. Thank you.
That was an amazing quote, and I know so many students who feel that way about you.
Thank you.
And I think that so many of the things that Diana wrote about, everything about you is contagious.
Well, thank you.
Really is.
I've told my students, I actually told that group, I think they had asked me once, you know, how did I become a history teacher? And part of it was somewhat by accident. I did confess to them that I didn't enjoy high school. I didn't love it. And they said, "Well, how come you came back to high school? And how come you came to be a high school teacher?" And I said, "Well, I always think about the fact that I didn't connect, or I went home and I wasn't sure what my teachers wanted from me." And I didn't have teachers who necessarily put in that, I had teachers who would walk straight by me in the hallway and wouldn't say hello. And I always remember feeling that. And so I said, "I hope in part I remember that always, and I can make it better for you." And that's sort of, I guess, the perspective that I take when I think about what high school is like and what high school can be for certain kids. And so, that's sort of the philosophy where I stand, that it should be enjoyable, it should be something that they all feel a part of when they come into the room.
Are you going to offer a prize or something for, on Monday or Tuesday morning, the first student who tells you whether or not there is the time capsule? You know, the unicorn, the golden unicorn, I mean, the silver unicorn and the golden lion have just been taken down from Faneuil Hall today for a major renovation, and it's going to, it's going to take six to eight weeks. It will be restored in Woburn. And there is rumor that in nineteen oh one, they put several things as a time capsule in there. So, they're going to take all kinds of photos first, and then they'll open it carefully so that it's, they're hyping it up all week on TV right now. This is as, so that's the latest history bit from tonight.
I haven't heard that.
Perfect for the US.
Anybody, any comments for Kristen or questions or?
Thank you.
Thanks for choosing Foxborough.
Thank you for all that you do for our students. I mean, what an honor. Wonderful words that have been spoken, and I was actually at that Honor Society, and so I remember the student who spoke of you. So, I think that you're doing what you didn't get, so I think that's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
You know, there are, maybe some of your students will have an idea. They're asking for suggestions about what should go into the time capsule when it goes back, before it goes back up. And they'll open it, yeah, they'll open it in another hundred, hundred years.
Anyone else? Steve?
First thing I wrote down was wow, right? Fantastic, right? And I won't speak for everybody here, but it might ring true. You know, we're all elected officials, but one thing that we all have in common in our messaging is, you know, student excellence, which comes from faculty excellence, which comes from administrative excellence, and doesn't cascade down, it cascades across. I don't always think down, I think across. But one question I had was, or if you had any comments, was you don't do that alone, right? I mean, there's a lot of collaborative teamwork, and the principal just mentioned how, you know, you lead seminars, but you also have to play off each other, and it seems like you're part of a team that helps everybody get there, whether you can all get there as individuals or not, right?
Absolutely. And that was, one of the questions actually was, you know, how do you make the community get involved in what you're doing, and how do you make the school get involved in what you're doing? And it certainly, some of the things that I've been able to do is certainly because of permission, because I can go to the office and say, "I'm thinking about running this program. How does that work?" And I get the green light to go. And it's also because I had fantastic mentors when I got here who were constantly giving me good advice, and I have a group of wonderful department members who, we laugh every day, and we just enjoy what we do all the time, sometimes at each other's expenses, but we definitely always have such a sense of humor about ourselves and about what we do, and we just really, we love the subject, but we also just really, we share constantly, which I think is definitely at play.
Thank you.
So, I feel very fortunate to be here. I feel very lucky, you know, every day. I love coming here every day.
It's a dream come true. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations doesn't say enough. It really, it really is people like Kristen inspire me to do better by them and provide more, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very.
Kristen, before we let you go, is there anything you think the school committee could do to help support your efforts and those of your fellow teachers? And you can come back to me with that.
Okay. I really can't think of anything right now. I really, I feel that we have opportunities, you know, to bring our ideas forward. I feel that we have a very open and collegial system right now, so that if you have something that comes to mind that you feel is necessary, so I don't really have anything that comes to mind.
That's okay. We, I always ask that question because we're always interested in getting better, but, you know, we think we do have a pretty special environment here, and it's thanks to people like you. My first reaction besides wow was fifteen years.
I know. I didn't say that, because it's in my prenup. I can't mention other people's ages.
And we, well, I didn't mention anything about age. I just said fifteen years. You know, I had the opportunity to go through open houses the other day with a lot of the parents, and you walk into Kristen's classroom, and she talks about her high expectations. She uses the eight minutes that the principal allows her for her rotation effectively, and you can tell when you walk out of there, and I told her this prior to the meeting, that this is going to be a pretty neat classroom. So, I too want to add my thank you. And when we talk about these teaching and learning highlights that we do, the superintendent often highlights the students, which I think is apropos, but I really like when she highlights the teachers too, because you guys make the special place that Foxborough is what it is. And I think that we owe her a standing ovation and round of applause for what Kristen accomplished, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, made her blush. Now we can let her go.
Awesome. Well-deserved is an understatement, so pump up the good work.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Is that a pretty infrequent occurrence that we have a Massachusetts semifinalist Teacher of the Year?
It is. Yes, because there are a lot of nominations across the state each year, and there were actually two nominees, I think from Foxborough High School, if I recall, but I'm a little correct? We had two nominees. So, there are nominees, I think, from most schools will nominate, you know, most schools or at least school districts will nominate somebody every year that really stands out in their, you know, collegial minds. So, the fact that, I'm sure, a lot of districts nominate someone to get down to the top ten in the state, because that could be any subject, any subject, any level. It could be anywhere from preschool all the way up through, you know, teaching seniors. So, when you think about the number of teachers across the state and the number of outstanding teachers who could potentially be nominated every year, yes, it's very unusual to make the top ten.
That's great.
And she certainly deserves it.
That's great. Okay. Back-to-school update.
Yes, so I've made a commitment to myself to try to go a little more paperless, so all of our administrative meetings now are with the documents going into a shared drive, which I just did today, and I have my back-to-school update on my phone.
Uh-huh.
Yes. Okay. So, the first thing I'd like to talk about, everything went really, really smoothly. We had another smooth start. I feel like every year, this is my fourth year opening as the superintendent, and every year when I check with the schools and I go around to the schools, everybody says, "This is the smoothest opening we've had so far." And it seems to become a theme, so either we are getting more and more smooth, or they're all smooth. But we have great people here, so no surprise. We had the typical first day of school, bus glitch, which usually involves a lot of photography, and, you know, a little, some delays with that, and we had a little, one bus of the three that leave the charter that, I'll just say, went off the route for a little bit, and then by the time you take a left and a right, you might find yourself back in traffic again. So, other than that delay, which did delay one of the three elementary schools' routes, it's solved by the next day, and we had really no transportation issues to speak of. So, that was great. Let's see, we had some personnel shifts, so I'd just like to give you a little bit of a heads-up on what's happened over the summer with personnel, especially late summer, and then when we get into the budget season later this fall, you'll see more specifics involved with the shifts and the staffing issues. So, we always wait until the beginning of August to make decisions about our, well, late July, early August, about kindergarten numbers, because we tend to have a lot of kids enrolling sometimes in kindergarten over the summer, particularly at one or more schools as opposed to all three. So, surprisingly to us, we had a reduction in the number of kindergartens registering at the Borough. We had more registering at the IGO, which has filled up four classrooms there. The Borough is down to two classrooms, and the Taylor has two. So, we are down one kindergarten section at the Borough School, and what happened there was one of our fourth-grade teachers moved to the Southwest. So, there was some shifting. One teacher moved to another grade level, another moved to another grade level, et cetera, so on, so that that position really was absorbed at Borough. So, everyone who was at Borough is still at Borough, and even though there were some grade-level changes, there was not a new hire as a result, for example. So, that's what happened there. And at the Taylor, they had two full-day kindergartens and a half-day section. So, their half-day numbers were very, very low. So, what we ended up doing was combining a handful of students, I'm going to say two or three or four at the Borough who still wanted half-day, with the same handful at Taylor and a group at the IGO. We only have, we're only running one half-day section this year at the IGO for all three schools. That seems to be working out pretty well transportation-wise. So, that just goes to show you what the demand is for full-day kindergarten. So, I know that every year we think about offering free universal full-day kindergarten without tuition. That still would be quite costly, but just to give you some heads-up on the very little demand for half-day kindergarten is really shrinking. So, it's the lowest interest we've had in half-day kindergarten to date.
Probably not surprising, right?
Not surprising, no. I don't think in this day and age, when you have families where both parents are typically working, and you want the full-day experience, once full-day becomes what most of the kids in town are doing, and parents see the benefits and share the benefits with their neighbors and friends, you tend to want more people who want it. So, we'll see. We'll have a discussion about that at some point. So, what happened with that position is that the person who was teaching half-day kindergartens also certified in special education and had been a special education teacher for us years ago, so she shifted into a half-special education position at the Taylor School.
So, she's .5 spin?
Yes. So, she's at the Taylor School in the same half-capacity that she was before, so that was a neutral shift. It also didn't result in a hire. We had a reading teacher at the IGO who was halftime, is staying home with her children now, so she resigned to do full-time care for her children. And so, rather than replace that half, we took a teacher who was .75 reading teacher and moved up to full. So, we're, Mr. Stanton's been wonderful at the IGO, so we actually feel we can accommodate all of that with a reduction of the .25. So, we're going to leave it that way for this year and see how it works out. So, that's a reduction of .25 at the IGO, so we traded a, we only filled a quarter of her half position, or half of her half, if you will. We did add one full-time educational assistant at Borough due to the nature, bless you, of a student's individual education program. That meeting occurred after February, so after we're in budget season, and that student requires additional assistance, so we went up by one educational assistant there. And as the school committee knows, I sent you an email, our Title I grant, welcome, Amy, to weigh in, our Title I grant, which has been fairly stable over a number of, at least ten, twelve years, suddenly we got much more in Title I money. And in fact, Amy, I joked, because when she told me it had gone up, and by how much, I said, "Well, that can't be right. You need to call the Department of Education, because that doesn't really happen." But I don't know if we can explain what's happened to other districts as well.
Sure. The Title I allocation is based on the census data that changes every year, and so there are like a couple of years, so two thousand and twelve data, and there are different pieces to the grant. We've always had just the basic, because if you fall below a five percent poverty, you have just the basic parts of the grant. And we've always been around four point eight percent. If you go above the five percent, then you get these two other pieces that are called targeted and EFIG, and from the two thousand and twelve data, it went above that, so we're at like six point one percent, which ended up increasing our allocation, which was nice. But we also know that we're teetering on that line, so it needs to be a support that's in place that we also know that might not be there the following year, because it's vulnerable from year to year where we're so close on that line.
And that's how they measure poverty, which is different from our free and reduced lunch counts, which is, you know, is a higher percentage. So, we're thrilled, and so we discussed toward the end of August with the elementary principals because it has to be spent according to Title I regulations, and we have one Title I school actually, which the qualifying school, one of our elementary schools, which is the IGO is the qualifying school. So, it has to be an elementary Title I type of support. So, we haven't, we've typically, because our allocation's been fairly low, we've been running a Title I literacy program for many, many years, like at least fifteen years, and not a math program. So, given that we had discussed with the committee that one of our goals is elementary math specialist, one in each school, we currently have two, shared by three schools, we thought this was a good opportunity to add some math support through the Title I funding, at least for this year, and see where we are with that. So, we added a .5 math specialist, so now we have two point five shared among three schools. So, we're getting there. Every step, I wouldn't call it a baby step, I call it a full step. So, every step, I think, is important. So, as, just to explain how that shift happened, we posted the position. We had an internal candidate who was working in another capacity, also certified in mathematics, in transferring, did. And then the .5 special education position at that school has been filled by one of our educational assistants, who became certified in special ed and filled in for us last year in the same capacity and did a nice job. So this has been a lot of shifting around, but all for the good of students. And so actually, with all of that, in terms of what we would consider our staffing, so with all of that, the pluses and the minuses, we're actually only up .25 in FTE, we're up a quarter. So everything sort of came out in the wash. So we're pretty close to where we were before. And then the MECO grant also went up, so we haven't had a MECO tutor, which is to help students, especially as they enter the Hearn from other school systems, to enter and acclimate academically. We used to have a MECO tutor and hadn't been able to have one, and now we can institute a MECO tutor, who is actually paid hourly, not, no, it's a different thing to the MECO grant. So we've posted that position, and we plan to add that back in.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent choices.
That's our personnel update. So there were, so all of that is really some wonderful opportunities over the summer to really look at our staffing and say, "How could we make all the programs we're working on work a little bit better and shift people around that would be beneficial to students?" And any questions about the personnel? I just have one more piece.
So all of that juggling while also bringing in, as we talked about the last meeting, was it 14 new?
We ended up with 18 new teachers.
Eighteen new teachers.
Through, either through taking on a new role, if you were an ed assistant, you became a teacher, you're considered a new teacher, or in retirements and moving. One moved, as I said.
So 18 new positions?
We had, is it 18 or 16?
16.
Oh, 16. I'm sorry. 16 new teachers, two new educational assistants. That's what I'm getting.
Oh, 18, yeah.
So 16 new teachers, yes.
So a lot of new energy and ideas and perspectives.
Yes, mostly at the middle and high school.
Yeah.
And it tends to fluctuate a little bit, depending on where the retirements are. But this year, most of our shifting was at the middle and the high school.
And I know it's been covered before in our prior meetings, and also Frank and the reporter have done a nice job. They had a great trip around town and...
Yes.
Of course, that was then followed by some professional development that we did, right, before the doors opened? Do you want to spend just a...
Both. So we, I'll let Amy talk about the PD that the new teachers had. We have two full days of new teacher orientation. I'm responsible for the entertainment portion, so we give them a little bit of break in the middle of the first day. We take them on a lovely bus tour of Foxborough, and then we end up at CBA scene and have a nice luncheon. And really, quite a nice partnership is the people from the craft group come over and give them a little tour of whatever it is we can see. So last year, we saw the Country Fest stage. This year, we were able to go out in the fields. The new teachers get to go out in the field a little bit. And we were actually watching how they erase the painted lines for one sport. They actually like scrub it and soap it up and vacuum it up and lay down the lines for the next sport coming. That was interesting. And then, for the first time, we get to go up in the press box to see what it looks like from where the press is watching the game. So they're really generous partners and just, to me, I feel like they're, our new teachers feel welcomed by the school committee on the day that they arrive for the new teacher orientation through your role. And then they feel welcomed by their mentors, their administrators, by a central office staff. And then I think by going up to Patriots Place, Patriot Place, and having the tour of the stadium, I think they feel really part of a community. They're joining a community. So it's really, it really puts the three faces on, on who's welcoming them.
That's great.
So thank you to the craft group and to Jess Stevenson in particular, who always comes and finds us and takes them on a little tour. Wonderful. And last but not least, in back-to-school update, just to give parents a little preview, you know I do a monthly parent leaders group, which is usually Tuesday mornings, and part of the feedback that we've gotten the last couple of years is there are a lot of people who might like to come and have that opportunity informally to find out what's going on in the schools. So this year, I'm balancing it between every other month, we'll have the Tuesday morning meeting, and then for working families who want to come in the evening, I'm going to host every other month a superintendent's coffee and conversation at the Boyd and Public Library every other month. And that's just open forum. Anybody who wants to come can come and chat about whatever they'd like to chat about. So we'll be posting that. In fact, if I could get Frank to write up the superintendent's evening coffee and conversation dates, that would be really great, because then people who don't watch the meetings will be aware that those are open to the public and anybody can come. Do you have one? Was it out there?
Thank you.
Okay. I can give him, I can give you one, Tina, if you need one.
I have yours.
You have yours. Perfect. So that's our back-to-school update. Thank you to all of our staff. The schools looked absolutely spotless, thanks to our custodial maintenance staff as usual. And in particular, thank you to our technology staff, who did so much work over the summer to really prepare everything about the schools. It wasn't a thing that needed to be done when kids came. Everything was really ready and ready to roll.
Amy, do you want to spend just a minute on what the PD focused on, just as a reminder?
Sure. Starting with new teachers, that's one of the things. We have two days with them, and they were immersed in PD that was writing across the curriculum, and that was led by both Diane Casilli and Shannon Wazlowski, the English department. And in addition to that, technology and a lot of things to really acclimate them. But then when we had the full days in August, we rolled out Office 365. And we rolled that out very differently, as far as how we formatted our PD sessions. It was really well-received. And a lot of the credit goes to Julia Greenstein and Darlene Reed, our two technology integration specialists. They worked so long to really make sure to meet the needs of different, varying user levels for technology, to where not only were we rolling out Office 365 and all the collaboration tools that came along with it, but in a way that really met their needs, where they could work at their own pace. We had members from our technology steering committee and those that served on the Masque evaluation report be facilitators. And they worked in, not just at their own pace through different things, but with their colleagues. Just the platform itself, where they could see what they're going to be able to do with it as far as collaborating with colleagues and with students when we roll that out with students. It was really exciting. So that was, that was huge. In addition to that, we had a number of sessions that focused on the results that came out of the K-12 Social Studies Curriculum Review that you heard about last spring, and really looking at how we're using primary sources and database questioning. And that goes across all of English and Social Studies, especially with the content literacy standards. So those were the biggies. So many other things that took place, and a lot of its continuation that will roll right into October 10th.
Keep it going.
In fact, I don't have, I don't know if I had Darlene Reed before the committee last year. So she joined us last year as the elementary tech integration specialist. Julie Greenstein's new to us this year as a secondary. I think I'm going to make them a teaching learning highlight, so you can find out what they do with teachers, because that's been a great addition. The two of them together are wonderful. And I will say, we also, at the beginning of the Office 365 training, we spent the early part as a whole group each session. So every staff member, whether you're elementary, middle, high, throughout the two days, started in an auditorium in a large group setting with Amy, Aaron Heyer, our tech director, and myself. And what we did was we highlighted the tech plan, what are some pieces of the tech plan that we wanted them to really focus on, so that we could communicate that better, because that was one of the things we found out, is it hadn't been well-communicated last year, because we had just rolled it out, then decided to map ourselves according to the indicators, so we'd have a clear roadmap. And we went over the technology program evaluation report with them, and what the highlights were there, and what we wanted them to take away about those two things, so that we had communicated both what we know about our current status and where we're trying to go through the tech plan. And that was really important for us as a start to the school years. And then the only last thing is that for the brand-new teachers, they also had their two-hour darkness-to-light training in how to recognize the signs of child sexual abuse and work on prevention and intervention. So, and for those two hours, we had anyone else new to us who could join, whether they were coaches. We had an influx of other people joining for that two hours, because we have committed to, when we come back every year, training new staff and that, so that we keep up with new hires.
Is that the only training we have in the year? Will there be another one?
That's the only training we're having, because each year, now, now that we've trained everyone, it's easy for us in August to identify who's new, and then, or who's new been new in the last year, and they go to that. The town, however, through our child safety committee, is offering trainings, actually, the end of September, on a Friday and Saturday night for anyone in the community. I know there's some town side employees that will be going. So there are, the town will be running some as a community. The YMCA also runs it periodically. But for our, in terms of fulfilling our commitment to have everyone trained, we do it, we're going to be doing it every August as part of the new, new teacher orientation. That way, we know, we capture them at that period of time. So that's, that was important for us as well.
Thank you for sharing the professional development. That's so important. I know you guys do such a nice job of that.
Oh, credit to Amy.
Bill, do you want to add anything from facility standpoint? I know you took us through last meeting, a lot of what the guys did over the summer. But in terms of back-to-school opening, schools or buildings?
Yeah, I mean, from a facilities point of view, I think, you know, we had a number of projects that were started. Obviously, 10 weeks isn't always enough time to finish everything. But, so they're still working. They've actually been working for the last couple of weeks and probably will through the end of September to finish off. You know, the data room is pretty much live and going at this point. Aaron is working with his crew to do the technology side of it, but the facility side of it is up and running. And the only thing left on that one is the new generator, which literally will be here any day now. It's all wired, ready to go, just needs to be dropped in place. So from that side of it, we're in pretty good shape. We have, you know, we've gone around now that we are open again, and both Tony and I built a list of any of the odds and ends that, you know, are much smaller on the list, that still need to be accomplished. So that's his goal for the fall, is to kind of clean up those. And Aaron and I are working on the security and, you know, phone side of things. Aaron's actually pulled together a couple of new vendors to look at things for us. So it's all, it's all starting to really gel together, so I think we're good on that.
Great.
The only other thing that obviously is the facility side of stuff is with the athletic side that we've been working on. So the best, the baseball fields out back, I'm sure you can all see they're green at this point, but still quite a bit of work to do on them. The contractor, I have to say, has been absolutely phenomenal. Green Acres basically had a contract to spend about 90 days after they seeded to, you know, maintain the fields, fertilize them, and whatever. And because we couldn't do it in the fall, we did it in the spring, based on the timing of when the money was available, they aren't happy and weren't happy with the results either. So they've actually committed to not only take us through the rest of the season, but in this process, to save us quite a bit of money, because they're going to go out and aerate and split-seed, reseed the entire field setup, and do two more fertilizations in the process, as well as maintain them
Wow.
for the whole fall. So as far as a partner, I would say they've been probably one of the best vendors that we've dealt with in this rain, and I think the fields in the spring will be phenomenal. I know there's still a community effort to build the dugouts for those fields. They were, you know, everything was done except for the actual physical structure that goes over the dugouts. Scoreboard's up and running. Obviously, we have our own wells out there, so we can water and keep the watering going. I think that's important that people know we're not using town water in the general sense to do as much watering as we are. But when you're building fields like this, you really need quite a bit of water to do it. So that's worked out real well. On the turf field, everybody's seen that the scoreboard is up. There's actually, the final connection will be done, I think, either tomorrow or the next day.
You're segueing into our next agenda item?
Yeah.
It's perfect.
Yeah.
That was smooth.
And on that, you know, on that scoreboard, it's a radio-controlled scoreboard, so it's remote anywhere they want to be on the field. It's not a wired setup. It is all LED, so it uses very little power. It obviously has the Sam Burns Community Field on the front side, but there will also be that same thing added to the backside.
I was going to ask that question, because I remembered that somewhere he said it was supposed to have been on both sides, and I had noticed it was just on the front right now.
When we had it made, you don't really know exactly where the pillars are going to be. So until you actually set it up in place, you don't want to put anything on the backside. We did have it painted, so that it would look appropriate on the backside. So the sign company is actually working on that, so we should have that up.
Great.
And we'll again say the Sam Burns Community Field from the backside. So as you approach the school and come up the parking lot, you'll have full recognition of what that field is, to the level I think everybody committed to do. So I think that's, that's really good. The next, obviously, the next phases, I think, you know, Deb and I discussed this, and one of the issues is to kind of push forward and just to have people recognize what we had talked about when we first developed the turf field. And that was that it was a multi-phase process. So I supplied you with a kind of a checklist of what we've done so far and what we talked about previously as being open items going forward. Again, it's all funding, you know, related items, and it's all based on when the community feels it's, it can afford to do it. Or, you know, if the community as a whole comes up on a, you know, another way of funding it, you know, that's also a possibility. The synthetic field and the baseball fields, we had originally estimated that it would cost us $1,340,000. Came in at $1,390,000, but only because we did stuff that we didn't originally have in the plan, so that we would, timing-wise, do it appropriately. One of those things is we didn't have a well and sprinkler system in the original design. But obviously, these fields were not going to grow if we couldn't do that at the time. So we did do that. We also did not have in the plan originally to do all the underground conduit for cable vision, to be able to do remote telecasting, instead of having to drive vehicles out near the fields and stuff, which we did do, obviously, all of the conduit that way as well. So when you add those things up, basically, that brings us up to $390,000. We would have been under budget slightly, had it not been for doing those items. But again, I feel, from a timing point of view, you don't rip something up later to, you know, when you can do it right the first time. So as you all know, the Spiny family was very generous on the $25,000 donation, so that was going to be part of the next phase, or one of the next phases on the turf field. So we benefited from their generous donation.
And that was for the scoreboard?
That was for the scoreboard. And then the next, there's really the balance of what can be done there. It can be broken down into multiple phases. It would appear that the most obvious next phase, in my mind, would be the lighting. And that is to be able to give extended use time on how it can be used. Obviously, as the fall comes on now, we're darker much quicker, so the ability to use it for sports, and that would be more community sports, to be honest with you, youth sports that use the fields when our high school is not in session. They do, obviously, the high school uses it all afternoon, and they're, you know, into different sports, band, everybody else is on it. But at night, when youth sports like soccer and lacrosse and stuff could be playing without the lighting and stuff. So, and that has some real ranges. There's from the really very basic lighting systems to now the new Musco lighting systems, which are fully controlled systems, very efficient in how they operate. And, you know, so those can range anywhere from that $150,000 to $250,000 range, just for the installation of it. And obviously, you'd have some additional electrical work that needs to be done in engineering. The second phase could be broken down into two areas, under the bleachers and track. And that is, we could do the track and then do the bleachers later, or you can do the bleachers and do the track later. So it really depends on, again, you know, what's available and how it's, how the community perceives it. And these, all these numbers that you're seeing on this list were numbers that were originally developed when we developed the turf budget numbers. Most of this hasn't changed over the last couple of years, because the industry is pretty stable. It's not like a building industry like the, you know, construction side of things. You don't have material costs varying that much. So, and then the final piece, obviously, and actually, once you do the bleachers, to be honest with you, you have to do the concessions in bathrooms, because legally, you'd have to have the bathroom facilities within X amount of feet, based on amount of people that could be on a, on a complex. So, and we would be just out of reach, I think, with the high school bathrooms for that size crowd to do it. So, and obviously, I think the concessions and bathrooms being on the area also keeps the activity confined to the space that you're...
Right. It would be hard to have the high school open and locked every time the community's using the field, or if not impossible. So as we develop it as a community field, it's really going to be self-sufficient.
I actually wondered if that would come before lighting, if you would say, you know, there's a reason to do bathrooms next.
Not really from the use point of view, because at this point, you know, with the smaller, again, because you don't have large crowds as far as parents and spectators and stuff. I mean, we do have the ability with portable bathrooms and stuff like that to at least manage the issue.
This is what we have right behind the IGO, you know, with the...
Right. And we do have some here right now.
Which isn't the ideal, but it's not the ultimate goal, but...
Right. But as far as the, you know, again, to really get full use out of the field, lighting would really be the next.
Extend the usage, extend the day.
Yeah. And I think, you know, from day one, I've gotten a lot of calls, a couple, you know, in the lacrosse area specifically, that really, you know, have felt strongly that the lighting, you know, needs to be pushed next. And I got to be honest with you, just based on the way the structures are, that you would have to build and the underground, you know, wiring and stuff you'd have to do, you'd like to know what that all is
Where you stop putting stuff on top.
Before you kind of set everything else down on top of it, because you'd hate to have to go through the track or go through anything else when you're trying to do that type of wiring. So, you know, and, you know, the range still is in the same dollar numbers. I mean, we're talking to do all of this. You're still in a couple-million-dollar range. We always said it was about a $3.5 million total proposition, if you were to go after this. And that's exactly what Attleboro spent on theirs. They did it in one shot. Obviously, we didn't have the resources to do it that way. But again, I think if you get this done in any, you know, pieces or already format, still in the end will be the project that we all hope it to be, is a single community, single location for the high school.
So this is kind of free information, so that we can start talking about what pieces or what we want to do going forward as a plan. There is, as Bill said, though, a lot of community interest. In fact, Sam's dad, Dr. Scott Burns, has a contact, a lighting company, and he said he'd willing, he'd be willing to reach out to them. So I think if we, if we be transparent about what are the next things that still have to be left In fact, Sam's dad, Dr. Scott Burns, has a contact, a lighting company, and he said he'd willing, he'd be willing to reach out to them. So I think if we, if we be transparent about what are the next things that still have to be left to complete it, you never know, you know, what, how we're going to be able to move the plan forward. But at least we can start by communicating what's left to do.
But it wouldn't make much more sense to put the electrical, lay it first before you put tracks and bleachers on top of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's almost a no-brainer.
What's the next step then for this?
Well, I think that, you know, tonight, after tonight, the community can think about whether you want to put any piece of this forward as a capital project for...
CIP.
Yeah, which we would do, as we do with December, January. And so that you could vote that if you wanted to put it forward as a capital project for the March CIP meeting. It's a thought.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the, I guess, obvious idea, right, to do the next one?
I think, I think it's good to put the next idea forward and then, you know, see how timely, given the resources within the town, which, you know, we do keep up with that and work collaboratively with them to see if it's possible, if it could be funded.
But this is actually very helpful, right, because it gives us a sense of how much we've got to bite off, right? So a couple hundred thousand for lighting, a hundred and seventy-plus thousand for concessions and bathrooms.
And I think we're putting it out here now. It's September. It gives the community time to respond and to weigh in and for us to get feedback from them as well, so.
Good point.
And I think we, you know, when we proposed the turf almost two years ago at this point, I think that we made a commitment to not go to the very next town meeting or the next special one after that with all the other pieces and to sit and wait for the next phases. And I think we've done that. And now that the community field is really up and being used by a lot of, lot of different types of groups, and I get wonderful emails saying, oh, it's our first time in the field. This is wonderful. And, and so I think that now that it is truly starting to be used the way the community envisioned it, that it's time for us to start talking about the next phases. And I think we have been rather, you know, quiet about the next phase, but at some point, we do have to communicate what's, what's left.
And I will say, as I said, you know, a number of people have contacted me in asking how the next phases even can come to light. So, you know, kind of realizing that they don't really have the ability to just, you know, easily put out warrant articles and stuff like that. But so they, I think just getting this information, you know, maybe, you know, you'll probably start to get some phone calls from some of them as well as to what their, you know, what their interests are. But at least, again, that's part of the community. That's what their, their choice is. And all we're doing is trying to take this forward, just like we did with the entire community field to start with. I mean, as you know, it wasn't ours as a baby that began. We had to bring it through ourselves as far as once it was handed to us. So, you know, again, I think if the, if the community is interested in more, I think they're going to speak. But, you know, we're the right forum as far as being able to, it is our, under our control. So as far as being able to show what the different stages are, we can do that part of it.
So we thought we'd present it early, and then over the couple of months, if you want to let Bill and myself know what level of interest you have, and then we'll know whether you want us to bring it forward as part of our capital requests.
Great, very good.
Could I ask Bill a question, please? I don't know the first thing about designing an athletic facility. Okay, let me start with that. Does this complex wish list include something like a shed or a hut or that could be used as like a first aid center or multipurpose or something like that? You know, I can imagine, I can imagine a concession stand. I can imagine lavatories, right? And water bubblets and bleachers. But do we need any other structures on or about the area for like trash receptacles, dumpster-ish stuff, that sort of thing? I just don't see it here and just didn't know if that was part of another part of it.
Typically, like we do in the, in the entire town, as far as all the fields and even all the school property, there are trash containers and stuff like that around that the DPW handles, if not our own staff, as far as getting rid of things. As far as the first aid station, you would typically build that into the concession stand.
Okay.
So if, you know, if you had a special need issue, there would be, basically, that would be the right structure. We probably, you know, with any luck, if we're able to, with the, within the operations budget, we will definitely probably put something up there that, that we can put our equipment in and keep it outside. It is one of the things that we used to have for baseball and other sports where they, when they were using the fields out there, because of where they are, they could lock stuff up inside a container there. We'll do something similar, because we also have all the grooming equipment. And it's actually having to run it back and forth in and out of the buildings, not the ideal thing. So we'll probably take care of that this year ourselves. Again, it could be as simple as a, you know, rental container, if we can find a decent one. But other than that, I think the, you know, the process itself will be pretty much self-contained within the structures that we do here. We should be able to do everything that you need for that facility. We've been very, very fortunate, even in the, in the design layouts that Jim DeValles and his college roommate Chris Huntress developed. We actually have layouts for how the track lays out already and how the bleachers lay out. And, you know, so we're actually ahead of the game. It's not like we're starting trying to figure out how this is all going to look. I actually have full plans and layouts as to where it would go and how it would go. So really, it's more of a funding issue than anything to me at this point. It's not really a process or a...
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to design, like I said, I was just trying to see if there was a number that needed to go on this list for such a structure or structure.
No, I think, I think these numbers really are pretty self-contained.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Bill?
No, but we did segue into this, and I had a Metco question.
Go ahead.
The Metco tutor, and this is my naivete, so excuse me. We get a Metco tutor, we're using some of the extra funds for the Metco tutor, from the Metco grant, to revitalize the Metco tutor position. Is that correct or, or start one?
To reinstate.
Reinstate, okay, thank you. Is that a, like with the, with the athletic issues we had with an athletic faculty member, where we have to meet state requirements, that sort of thing?
Oh.
Is that a requirement of the Metco?
No.
Okay.
It's not a requirement. I think it's a good practice.
And agreed, okay. So is such a position with or without Metco money something that would be good for our school system to have in place? Either in whatever half or full-time positions that may be required?
No, we don't, we, I don't, my first early thing is to say, I'm going to think more about it and get back to you. But my first instinct is to say no, because the whole purpose of a Metco grant, we already absorb a lot of the per-people cost.
Sure.
Because the Metco grant does not cover really the cost of educating children. It's a, it's a rich program for us to have. So really, the Metco grant is to help with transportation to and from. It's to have, partially pay for a Metco coordinator, which we have, half-time Metco coordinator. That's what it's traditionally done. And if possible, to provide academic support as the students acclimate to our school. So I think that's part of what the grant funding is for, for us to do things that are right by students. But it's not typically a position we'd have in our district, because without the Metco grant, we don't know if we'd have a Metco program. But it's certainly to our benefit to, to keep one, to keep the Metco program going and to make it as, as quality as we can.
Yeah, that's what I was going for, and not implying anything, except that I didn't know how it works.
No, we have other similar positions that we don't consider on the staff. Like we have, there's an academic six thirty-two grant at the high school that pays for, when the, when the kids go to get extra ELA. Anyone in the high school can go get ELA or math assistance upstairs at Media Center. Those are six thirty-two grant tutors that the, they used to be called, used to be called the MCAS Grant.
Okay.
Now we just call it the six thirty-two grant. But it provides tutoring for ELA and math to anyone in the high school. So that's also an hourly type of tutor position. So it's similar to those grant-funded positions. Not full-time. In fact, all two, the two English tutors here are retired English teachers. So they come back with all of their expertise and richness in tutor for roughly about four hours a day.
Yep. Thanks.
Between the two of them.
Yes.
Bill, do you want to make a final comment just about the IGO playground? I know that as the summer was...
That is beautiful.
As the summer was winding down, I know you guys were working hard to get that done. And that's obviously a real visible project in the NFL partnership, and I just make a comment about that.
Well, I think the, we're about ninety-nine percent there. We have a little bit of signage and some painting that will be done on the, the track area to make it look like a track. And on the football, that's the logo underneath the swing set will be painted to look more like a football with the strings and stuff. But overall, the, you know, we made it by a day, which, you know, make it by a dare, make it by a hundred, doesn't matter, as long as you make it. And the, the end result is that, you know, it's used constantly now. The kids love it. You know, it's kind of fun to watch them run out and go to their favorite, you know, activity on the, on the place. And some, sometimes it's, you know, as Deb noticed, one day, it's just the kids sitting underneath in the little area and just, you know, having a conversation. Otherwise, it's the, you know, the spinning cocoon, which occupies four of them, two inside and two spinning it.
That's quite popular.
Yeah. But it's all athletic. I mean, they're, they're enjoying the rubber surface immensely, which I have to, I have to say is, it's actually good to see it as a, you know, from my perspective, from a facility side, because the, the mulch areas that we do on all the other schools, a lot of upkeep, a lot of, you know, issues. It's not as soft, even though it's rated to be as soft as what we've got there in that rubber. It's not. I mean, this, this, this material is even, it's constant, you know, so we're, no matter where they walk or where they are, it's that same kind of sponginess. It's well-protected. I go there, you know, obviously, when we leave, you know, the kids are obviously out of, out of school, but there's, there's, community parents are up there with their younger kids. And if you drive by at night, they're, they're still up there enjoying it. So it's, it's really turned out to be the playground that everybody was hoping it would be. It's not just for the kindergarten and the IGO school itself, but a lot of the community members have really enjoyed it.
Have we sent pictures or had people come from the Kraft group to, to check it out?
Were we, we have had, they just came over about a week ago to look at the rest and so that they could work out with Bill what's the, what are the remaining signs that we want up there, that they want up there. So that, I think those are on order or close to being ordered. We're waiting for a dedication date.
Oh, nice.
And we're waiting for a date that, for Mr. Kraft's schedule, because he'll represent both the NFL Play Sixty Grant Program and the Kraft Charitable Foundation, which doubled the grant. So we're waiting for confirmation of a date, so I don't want to say a potential date, because we don't have confirmation of it. But as soon as we know, you will all know.
Okay.
And it will be during the school day.
I was just wondering if we had positive feedback, because I know we've had it from the community. I'm assuming they're happy with what's been done.
Yes, there's been two groups that have come over. They're very positive about it. And we're just waiting for the official dedication, so that all the IGO school can participate. So it's got to be sometime during the school day.
Nice.
And really, I mean...
So I know you'll know.
There was, there was three components to how that thing got built. Obviously, the PTO, which started the whole proposition, and, you know, put in about twenty-eight thousand dollars towards it. That's a lot of fundraising, but they did very well with it. Obviously, as Deb just said, with the Kraft organization and the Play Sixty, another sixty thousand dollars. And then, you know, the amount that we put in at the end of the year to make the balances up. It's, it's interesting, but basically, between the PTO and the Kraft organization, the equipment and the rubber surface were covered. And it really, what we did was the retaining walls and the grading and stuff. So I think overall, we accomplished the end goal. It was a three-way partnership, and I think it worked out very well. So haven't heard anything negative on it, so I think that's the real positive.
We just get a date. We're waiting.
You had a note in our packet of some thank yous. Do you want to cover that later when we do donations and recognition? Okay. All right, so we'll come back to that. All right, I just want to publicly thank Deb and Amy and Bill for all their work that I know the public doesn't see during the summer months. But just to kind of put a bow on this back-to-school topic, you know, we get an opportunity as school community members to see a lot of the work that goes on. And the reason I knew to ask Bill about the IGO is because I saw him and was working with him a few days prior to the opening of school. And he said, this is the last one I'm sweating over, and, and you made it by a day or you made it by a hundred days. You're right. The other, the other comment I'll just make is the, the baseball fields remain closed. And I think it's important the public know that. We've had some people going on there. They look so nice. It's wide-open space. And I can't tell you how often I've been back on the Hershey Field with the soccer team and I see a black truck come along. And I swear, he's just there to help make sure that people are adhering to that, to try to protect the fields. And I don't think that's written in his contract, that he should be doing that quite as often as he does, so.
He's everywhere.
Thank you, Bill, for helping us in all those respects. Okay, are we ready for Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed Coordinated Program Review timelines and process?
Yes. So as you may remember, the Department of Education does a coordinated program review of a school district once every five years or so, and it's our turn. So I'm going to turn it over to Amy, and she can explain what's happened already and what's going to be happening this fall.
All right. So last spring, this work began in the area of civil rights and special education, where we had to go through a self-assessment and provide the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education many, many documents of how we do business, basically. And we did that in May, and then since that time, we've continued to gather other information to be prepared and not knowing exactly when they would be coming to visit us, but we knew it would be sometime this school year. So we learned that they would be visiting us in the fall. And since then, we've had a meeting with our person from the Department of Ed, myself, Debbie, Dr. Einzel, and talked about records for review. They go through and look at our records of our ELL students. They look at our special education. They look at our processes. They let us know who they want to interview, how long they will be in the district, and all of the things that they will be doing as part of their observation and their program evaluation this fall. So since that time when we met with them on September the tenth, we are now in process of pulling together information in the areas of Title I and the area of English language learners. And so that's not just records and making sure all of that information. It's like thirty-three different standards, and what does our program look like and how do we meet the needs of all of our students? And making sure that we're following the guidelines that are set forth by the Department of Ed. So a lot of paperwork has to be put in place.
It's not really fun.
To have that ready. I mean, it shouldn't be any surprises to us after we've gone through the self-assessment and knowing really where our strengths lie and the areas that we would want to address. You know, just as an example, we're a low-incidence district for English language learners. Our population fluctuates from year to year. And looking at the languages of all of our students, we do not have a common language. We have so many different languages. So really, addressing the needs of our students and families, et cetera. So we have to have all of our records ready for them on November third and fourth, for them to look at that. They'll also let us know if there's things that we missed from the self-assessment last May. And then they will come back and be on-site with us, conducting observations. It's not evaluations of teachers. It's observations of spaces. And looking at our physical locations in buildings, looking at our programs, looking at what we offer for students and how we offer those programs.
So they'll interview staff, say, on, looking for one criteria to see if, say, the director of special education reports the same thing as a staff member, reports the same thing as an educational assistant, because they're looking to triangulate data to see, just because we say it's a practice, is it really, do they see it? And is it reported universally that people understand it? So that's a really full week. They're here five days that week for a full week, interviews.
Lots of, lots of visits and lots of observations, and it's all schools.
All schools.
It's all schools.
They submit a report sometime after that or at the close of their last day?
They will submit a report to us afterwards, and then we'll have an opportunity to respond to it before they then submit the final report.
This is the same process, if you remember, that identified the physical education requirement and required us to have an interim corrective action for it, same, same...
Inspection.
Same type of thing. So, you know, we usually do find it informative. I guess on a positive note, both Amy and Sandra and I have been through this probably four times each. So it's not new to any of the three of us.
So it's the kind of thing that if they do identify areas that they cite as needing improvement, that a corrective action will be, and you can respond to that before they actually issue their report, so that you can address those areas?
If we think there's a mistake or that they didn't see a particular thing, but it's actually happening, we have an opportunity to correct misinformation. And then once their report is finalized, then we submit a corrective action plan.
Yeah.
Which they accept, and then we have a two-year, and, you know, usually it's about at the two-year mark, we have to, they review whether we've made progress.
Do they come back and do it all over again in two years, or is it more...
They don't come back. It's just more of an information exchange.
They do a mid-cycle, review three years into the six years. And then as far as this full-blown, where they're on-site for a week, that's every six years.
Lucky, lucky us then. It's that time.
Feels like it. Six years went by fast.
I think we're happy that it's in the fall. So that way, because we're, we're in the mindset from the self-assessment from the spring, and that way we can just continue on and finish up.
Any support you need from us, other than recognition of all the hard work?
A little commiseration.
A little commiseration.
Okay.
We'll water up some of that.
All right.
It's good. Thank you to Amy and Sandra, who really prepared all of the documentation for the self-study in the spring, because really, Amy's right, by the end of that point, we kind of know if, you know, how, how we look, we've been through before, so there really shouldn't be, if they're, if, if they come onsite and there are surprises, then either they missed a piece of our documentation, or we misunderstood a new regulation or requirement or standard. So we'll see what happens. We found it informative in the past.
We submit everything to them. As an example, whether it's a student handbook, a staff handbook, all of our policies, procedures that relate to certain areas. So if we were submitting everything and there was something that we had, but we didn't submit it, and they come back and say, "You do not have this," oh, yes, we do, we just didn't upload that piece of evidence.
Right.
They're quite thorough, which is why they, they'll come for two full days for a record review. They're going to review about 40 special education records and about a dozen English language learner records, so they look fully through all of them, so.
Sounds like a joint commission kind of equivalent to a hospital plug. Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll update you as to how it went after November 21st.
All right, good luck. Good luck, have fun.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Stay in touch.
Enjoyed staying in Chicago commiseration.
Good luck everyone. We'll bring in a pizza. I don't know if the public knows, but every year, we get to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Annual Convention, which is an opportunity for us to learn and attend information sessions on some of the hot topics, which is always great. And every year, we appoint a delegate, I believe, to represent us and vote on any required actions that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees wants to take. And we've been very fortunate in the past years to have a, a member of our committee willing to invest that time and represent us, and I don't know if her, her plans are this fall, and if she'd like to do that again, but I'll open the floor for discussion on that topic.
Well, I am at present signed up for the full convention, because I am the only one who really has the time to be able to do that.
I nominate Bev.
Steve, you beat me to it.
After thoughtful deliberation.
All those in favor, sorry, sorry.
Go for it, roll.
I second.
I second it. We're good, we have a motion in the second.
I second myself.
Any further discussion, no, here, none?
Remember, I was sworn in again as your, as your liaison to the, I mean, this is very official. When you become the liaison point to the recreation committee, you have to get sworn in.
Yes.
So, you know, I've been wearing that half, quite a while now.
We were happy to do that, too.
Yeah, but we're talking about the delegate right now.
So this is another job that may, maybe open some year.
Well, Bevy, we'll see you down there for at least a day or two.
And I will check, I will be sure to check to see who comes on which day.
I, I can't imagine what the reaction down there would be if you weren't our delegate.
Yeah, I know.
I actually enjoy networking with all the different people across the state, and there were some crackerjack people in education in Massachusetts.
Bev, I just want to thank you for representing us and for agreeing to represent us again this year, so.
Me, too.
I know it takes time away from.
Rehearsals.
Yeah.
Musicals.
So I don't know if we need a formal vote, but I'll call for one anyway. All those in favor, all those in favor of Bevy serving as our delegate again?
Aye.
Bevy, thank you very much, sincerely. And so, Deb, you just have to sign this form, I guess, for her.
Yes. Yes, so I will fill in her name, and I will sign it. And I'll just do, Janet, I'll do tomorrow one that you, I don't have a-
And then Janet, you send it in, right?
Yeah, I'll send it.
And I'll sign it, yes. Great.
Bevy, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, acceptance of donations.
Oh, always one of my favorites.
Yeah, so why don't we start with the, we're getting the, in focus, the projector. Why don't we start with the, since Bill is setting that up, why don't we start with the one that we're about to see? So Amy, I'd like to invite Amy up from the class of 1994, Foxborough High School. I didn't get a chance to meet you before the meeting.
How are you?
All right, so if you don't mind, would you introduce yourself?
My name is Amy Crash, formerly Amy Korea. I actually graduated from Foxborough High School in 1994, and I currently still live in Foxborough, and I have three children, two of which currently are in school here, and one that's small, so she's not in there, so.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So Amy, in representing her class, as you know, has a proposal, so.
Yeah, so I, I took a little time to put something together. A few of us collaborated and put a little presentation together. Well, it's our 20th reunion, and, you know, we were talking about memories and what we should do, and the one thing that unfortunately came up is that we've lost several people in our, in our high school class at a very young age. Something that, you know, is difficult, and we, we wanted to kind of take time to kind of remember not only them, but with recent events with St. Burns and other classes that have lost people recently, we thought that instead of really focusing on just our class, we should kind of focus on everybody. We were all very fortunate to be able to come here and to have the friends that we did, and we wanted to kind of take the time to, to really celebrate those lives that unfortunately were, were cut short, for whatever reason. So with that, we, we kind of came up with, you know, putting together some sort of a memorial tree at, at the, at the school. I kind of briefly spoke with Diana, who actually was my social studies teacher at one time.
My Spackler was your social studies?
Yes, she was actually with my, one of my, I was very fond of her, but, so I did speak with her briefly, and she was very happy to kind of give me a little suggestions as to where we could put it. I took a picture right there of the place that we were possibly thinking of putting, something that wasn't too big, that flowered, had some nice foliage, but wouldn't really disrupt, I know, I guess there were some trees there, if I remember correctly, that there were lots of roots, just something that would flower each year, or had some nice foliage, and put a plaque together that would kind of tie it in, hoping that, you know, even maybe some, someday along the line, another class would donate maybe a bench to go along with it, something to that extent, you know, in the future. So the couple of examples we picked were the Cusa Dogwood or the Bloodgood Maple, because they're, they're really pretty, they don't get too big, not real rooty or anything like that, so. I don't know if you guys have any other suggestions, but that's kind of what we've come up with, 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 you know, suggested between all of us that it were collaborated. And we had actually put together this, I know that there may have been some questioning with the verbiage, but, you know, we named it the Foxborough High School Memorial Tree, dedicated to the memory of those who have walked these halls before us, yet passed too soon, and it would be a gift from the class of 1994. Basically, what we're, we're looking to do is doing the fundraising within ourselves and within our unit, do, whether it's a GoFundMe, and also maybe some fundraising events in order to supplement whatever that might be. We'll cover the cost of the tree, the planting, the plaque, everything. We're just kind of looking for permissions and guidance, and, you know, some suggestions, if, if you have any.
A lot of thought has already been put into it.
Yeah.
About, you know, the roots.
Yep, I remember tripping over those roots. So.
Questions or comments or thoughts from the committee?
I think it's a very thoughtful idea. I like the, I love the concept of it, and I guess I would just look to the committee as to what we could do in response to that, and I would assume maybe location would be something, maybe facilities would, department would get involved in.
We, we had actually talked about possibly like, in this, the area outside of the media center, where it's kind of, there's really nothing there, and we kind of, but that's obviously open for discussion or changes, or whatever suggestions you might have.
Steve?
That, that's beautiful. Thank you.
No, thank you for.
Is there a group, I know you're here tonight by yourself, but are there a group of-
Yeah, there's, there's a few of us, all part of the same graduating class. There's like three or four of us, but we've put it out, we have our own little Facebook website that we've kind of been talking about it, but didn't know where to go from there. A lot of people are interested in donating, donating their time, their services, and things like that, so.
So I'm just wondering whether that group could work maybe with, you know, the facilities or some administrators here to kind of come up with a, a plan for this.
Yeah, I think, other, other thoughts?
No, I agree with Katie, I think that's a good idea, and I like the, I love the idea of a memorial tree. I always love when something is planted in remembrance of, of happy times and, and people that have been a part of our lives, I think that is fantastic. I know the, the wording is something that, to, to think about, it's, it's lovely, but it, you know, we may, it, it's, the remembrance is the important part.
Correct.
That focus on, on the passing, you know, with the students in school, and looking at it every day, maybe just focusing on the life and the remembrance.
And we're definitely open to working with you guys as far as verbiage and things like that, and that could be something that, when the time comes for, for that to happen, right now, we're kind of looking for the go-ahead to do some fundraising for it.
I like the name Memorial Tree, though. I, I think that the memory and, and memor, and memory of people who you went to school with and are still friends with and are, are missing, the whole concept of a memorial tree, I think is great, and is an excellent class gift.
Amy, I think what I'm hearing is consensus from the committee to go forward.
Okay.
We don't determine placements of shrubbery or trees, of course.
No, 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 of course not.
But I think, I think if you work through the, the right groups, facilities, and I think the fact that you've got Mrs. Myers-Packler involved, I think is important. And I think the right time for us to accept a donation would be once you've got the fundraising done, and, but it sounds like we all like the idea.
Yes.
You know, location to be further determined. I like, I like the location, but maybe there are other places better. I, I do share Tina's thought about the messaging.
Sure.
Just in terms of all the younger students who are here and walking around, and so maybe that's something you and your team can-
We're definitely open to.
But I, I want to commend you and the class for giving back to the schools. I think that's a nice idea, it's very nice for us to hear that, so. I appreciate you spending your personal time tonight to come forward and-
I did like the part, walking through these corridors or whatever.
I love the, the walking through these halls. I think all the who have walked these halls or whatever.
You know, you know, it just in, in, in memoriam of all the people who have walked these hollowed.
Hmm, something to that effect.
Yeah, these high school corridors or whatever you said, you know.
So I'm not a planting expert, so if you work with Mrs. Myers-Packler and with Bill on the location.
And she's very good at, she's very good at wording, too.
And if you work with Diana and me on the plaque wording.
Right.
Sure.
And then you go ahead with your fundraising.
So basically, tonight, I was just looking for the go-ahead to say that this is what we're going to do, and then, you know, maybe we'll come back at a later date, in a, probably in a couple of months.
Right.
And, you know, discuss whether it's placement, or come up with, you know, some sort of a more concrete plan, but just kind of wanted to get the go-ahead.
That's great, thank you. Any other, any other comments or questions or suggestions?
Good luck.
We can do this by consensus.
Yeah, right now, I think so, yep, Amy, thank you.
They're both beautiful trees.
Great, thank you very much.
Have the green light, go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, they are both beautiful trees.
Can you order one that stays in bloom all year long? I wish.
I know, that would be ideal.
We'd have to move the school to Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, it's interesting, too, I, I know we had discussion back when we were doing the renovation project about what we wanted to do with our grounds and landscaping out there, and I know we've worked hard to put in a lot more grass, which is nice, and I liked how Amy emphasized not having something that was too big and getting back into these big 50-foot.
With the big roots.
I think we should stay with something ornamental, the, the whole issue with the trees that we took down was because of damage they were doing to the roof.
Yeah.
So, and that's why we took all the trees around the building down, because there was just too much stuff going onto the roof and blocking the drains and stuff like that. So if it's, if it's a lower ornamental, you know, it just have to be, you know, kind of conscious of the DPDW doing their job, but I think if you could work out something there.
Right. Okay.
So more donations?
Yes.
Turn it over to Bill.
Yeah, the, one of the things that happened during the process, and I think I mentioned this when we were talking previously about the Igo, we were very fortunate to have a few community members step forward that had, you know, construction businesses and, and really kick-start this whole thing with their equipment, their labor, and their time. You know, Mike Pacella was the first one onsite and helped to do all of the demolition. He brought in his own dumpster, we'd put everything into it, and he took that off-site and didn't charge us anything for it, his equipment and his, his guys to do the work, so, you know, that was obviously a great start. It happened literally the day after school got out, to get the thing moving. And then we had been talking with Chris McNamara from C-Mac Incorporated, which is a cement specialist, all the way through the process, and he had been involved in the Burroughs School, you know, build for the park, the playground there as well. So he, he actually knew exactly what was going to happen and, you know, what the issues were going to be around it. Obviously, we made it a little bit more complicated, increasing the size of this one and putting in the retaining walls and, and things of that nature, but he was really, I, I got to be honest with you, he was my partner through the entire process, donated a significant amount of time, a significant amount of equipment, and in the end, you know, he did give me a breakdown, because we did obviously hire him to do a few of the minor things along the line that were not really directly related to this project, but he even managed some of the stuff where he brought it in on his account and just gave us the invoices to pay through for him. So in the end, his, his time basically, for time and equipment, was about $20,000 worth of value that he just donated to us. And so I'd like you to kind of accept the, the $20,000 donation of his time and labor, and, and also, I'd like you to thank, you know, Mike Pacella and the Pacella Group for the work that they did, because quite honestly, without that, we would have had to spend a lot more money, and to be honest with you, I, I don't know that I would have had all the resources I needed to get through the processes as well as we did, so, those are, I guess, the two things. Well, one's an actual vote of, of acceptance of a $20,000.
The, the name of that person?
That's Chris McNamara from C-Mac Incorporated.
Make a motion.
It's in here.
To accept donation from C-Mac.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, with gratitude.
With gratitude?
Thank you very much.
A great deal of gratitude.
Great deal of gratitude.
They were meticulous, too, meticulous.
Well, Debbie, I know you always do this, but let's be absolutely sure we send them letters.
I've already written it down, and actually, since, it was this kind of labor-intensive donation, I wouldn't even mind if it was co-signed by you.
Happy to do that, yep, something that they can hopefully know how much.
I think that would be appropriate, have.
Thanks.
And this is the stuff we don't see, right? I mean, this is the spinal column of, of the, of the project, and it, you don't see that behind-the-scenes stuff that's so important and vital to the structure of whatever it is that we're putting in.
Well, I think it's, it's also the, kind of the fabric of the community that you don't normally see, because it's not in headlines.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not, you know, the PTO, again, I think did a phenomenal job raising $28,000, that's not an easy thing to do.
You know, Chris McNamara's wife, Nikki, was president of the PTO when the fundraising started, so the playground wouldn't have come together as nicely as it did without both of the McNamaras and all their employees.
And even Chris's guys, he had two, two of his staff that basically were at the time, every time he was there, they would be there, and their attitude towards the whole thing was just pretty impressive. was just pretty impressive. I mean, you know, you look at concrete work, and I mean, some people don't get it, but, you know, it could be just being flat. They went hand-troled the entire thing because they wanted the look to be what it is. And what's nice about that is.
I didn't know they were, you know, he was volunteering because I was out there checking on it, was amazed at the attention and the meticulous, every detail. And I went back and said to Bill, like, wow, who's that company out there doing the concrete? And he said, they're volunteering. I couldn't even believe it. I mean, it was amazing.
You also wanted us to acknowledge Mike Pacella?
Yeah.
And Pacella Excavation for their generous donation of labor, equipment, and dumpster during the demo of the old playground, right?
Right.
To kick off the project. So I want to make sure we formally thank them.
Do you want to motion, want to make a motion to accept that?
Yes.
With gratitude as well? And Steve, you want to second that? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're so fortunate to have such generous community members.
People who care. Okay. I think that's it on donations. So we are on to other matters.
Wow.
I have one. You must have some.
I've been to two open houses so far. They were pretty wonderful. And the other three are this week. So I think the principals are doing a great job with their open houses for parents.
I agree. Well, I know you and I both wanted to represent Ellen Garber and talk about the Bottle and Can Drive.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's coming up. That's okay. I had it. I got it. I got you.
Foxborough Music Association.
Foxborough Music Association, their annual Bottle and Can Drive. Ellen contacted us. I think she's helping spearhead that effort this year. And I think it's the 20th.
Saturday.
Saturday. Thank you, Tina. So all those bottles and cans, people will come and pick them up or bring them to Town Hall. Katie, you're a veteran of.
I am.
Veteran of bottles.
Have your, have them out there. They'll come and take them. And they run from house to house and they'll get them and they're.
Good place for your bottles and cans to go.
It is. It's an awesome place. So.
And I think actually, now that you mention it, the BIT people are doing their clothing drive at the Ahern. I think it's October 4th. So isn't it clothing? Yes, it's clothing drive. So if you've got bottles and cans or clothes, donate them to some of our local community organizations.
And when is the clothing, do you think October?
October 4th, outside the Ahern, like in the Ahern Circle.
So we bring them to the Ahern?
Yes.
Okay.
Saturday, October 4th.
Other, other matters? Tina?
Yes. Well, we were, Steve and I were discussing as the meeting started, that we have a young man at Foxborough High School who was named a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship or National Merit Scholar Program, Varun. And you're going to have to help me out with this.
Well, Varun's well-known around school, I think, by a lot of people.
Say it again, Mrs. Spinelli.
Well, it's probably not exactly right because I blew it on the community field. Number Christian.
Well, Varun has spoken to this committee before. He was one of the students who came before us.
He's one of the bros.
Yes, one of the bros. And we all want to, I think we'd all like to congratulate him on his achievement. That's, I know, I read about it. I read Dan's article in The Patch about Varun. It was great. And it's quite an accomplishment to be named a National Merit Scholar Scholarship finalist.
Certainly is.
Yeah. So that is great. And then I don't know if we want to discuss it tonight, Bruce, but I know Janet mentioned to me that our meeting in November is scheduled for the same night as the special town meeting. So perhaps the committee wants to think about when we want to reschedule or if we.
What's the date on that?
That is November 17th. So it's just proof for thought. I raise it so that we can start checking our calendars.
And may I say that the first person to alert me of the conflict was Joe Garrity.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Because the second person was Janet. She told me. But thank you. You see, he's got the ball rolling.
Do you have a question or comment, Joe, on this topic?
The special town meeting for November, I was saying that the November, we have for the November calendar, I was saying that November 3rd, we have a regular meeting as scheduled. And then November 10th, I'm not sure if you guys want to do it the day before Veterans Day, if you want to reschedule the 17th. And then 24th is parent-teacher conferences, and that's right before Thanksgiving. Then you guys have a meeting. Then December is the 1st and the 15th.
Good points.
It's a lot to think about.
Wow.
Maybe we could ask the superintendent to take a look and think about the workload.
That is complicated. Thank you.
And think where we're at. See if we have so many items, maybe we need to do it November 10th or 24th.
Good thinking.
That's something we can talk about.
This year, we don't have to do school improvement plans. I was saying that we don't have to.
Good points. Excellent point. All right. So Mrs. Spinelli and I will look at the calendar and figure that out. Thank you, Joe. That's.
But thanks for telling me about the conflict.
Absolutely.
Joe, are you saying the 24th, is that the Monday of Thanksgiving, the week of Thanksgiving?
Yeah, but that is a parent-half day, is it? Because it's parent-teacher conference.
I think we should stay away from that week. That's my two cents. But not that you've asked for it, but yes.
I would tend to agree.
Yeah.
Well, we don't need to decide tonight. I just thought I'd raise it so that we can check our calendars.
I'm glad you brought it up, Tina.
Other, other matters?
Just have a wonderful year, everybody.
Have a wonderful year. Steve, Katie?
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Is that what we need? Tina, is it a motion to adjourn?
I'd love to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to second that, please.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.